Call the meeting at six o'clock. Can we have a roll call?
Councilor Johnson, here. Councilor George.
Here.
Councilor Price, wait.
Here.
Here, Craig.
Here.
I have not heard from them.
Okay.
All right, please join me in the flight suite.
Flight of leave is to the flag, United States of America, and to the rolling for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we now have four approval of the agenda.
I approve the motion that we approve the agenda of October 19th, 2017.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move on to this. All right, five approval of the minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes from October 5th, 2017.
Do you have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous as well. Moving on to item six, committee reports. A, economic development and tourism.
I'd like to see if we could just push that one back to the end, if that's okay with you.
Okay, to the end of the meeting or to the end of this session?
Any other reports, committee reports?
Uh, that's fine with me. The objection to that?
No.
Nope. Is it gonna be later this?
No, I'm just gonna show some pictures and show something, it'll be fine.
Okay.
It's not gonna be a thirty minute, uh...
It will shall not.
Okay. Uh, B, finance. Finance committee has not met since our last meeting, that I'm aware of. Public facilities and services also has not met. Airport?
We're having our next meeting, what, the, March Tuesday the 24th or something like that? Is that right?
Yes, yes, well, we think that was it.
Yeah, so we'll be getting out another agenda for that tomorrow, I assume, so you mind Richard, I'll just sit down and sort of, I guess.
Okay. I'm sorry, you said Tuesday the 24th?
Yes.
Is that still at noon in here?
At noon, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, E, emergency plan task force.
We have a bet that we've gotten some feedback from FEMA.
Okay.
And I can't really make out what it is that they're talking about, so it has to be examined because I noticed that Mark also got... You know, I got two prior emails, but...
And did anything there for me, Mark?
The Department of Defense is just, uh...
Okay.
It's confusing, I can't figure out what to do.
All right, Veterans Memorial?
I, uh... I don't know, Mark, do you've got anything to say about... Do anything yet?
Not yet. Other than that, we have the Veterans Fountain, I think is what we're calling it. We have money in the budget this year for sidewalks, and I'm looking at getting included from it and start working after the sidewalks add and be the first one that will be moved. It's, uh, take out part section of that area and work with all the works to take that tree stump out and, uh, do that section of sidewalks. So hopefully we'll get that before this season.
Okay, it's good.
Okay, so as far as I have to report on the Veterans Memorial, that, uh, hopefully we'll be getting through the work on the Veterans Memorial at the beginning of the, their funding budget. Just wanna reiterate everything he just said.
I was gonna say, that's what he said.
Word for word.
All right. I am G, the Moss Brae Trail. Essentially, we've been waiting on the scientific survey work to be completed and the report to be completed for presenting to the Union Pacific Real Estate Department. We were hoping that that would have been done by the end of September. Um, it was not, but it should be done soon and, and hopefully we'll have more to report soon. Broadband initiative, I know there were some meetings that I missed last week. Bruce, do you have any update there?
Uh, we're still, um, trying to work out how the three cities wanna respond to the requirement for a deliverable out of this process. And, um, the, the process as it stands right now was an RFI was supposed to go up, and, and the problem is, is that we as a group of the three cities have not, the stakeholders have not really met in a, in a real deliberate fashion with everybody present to be able to work through how we wanna approach the RFI, so we're kind of in a holding vote for the time being. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Is, is CTC, uh, okay with that until we get our act together, or are they, are they upset with us?
No, the latest, well, how would you, here, I thought today you wanted to go with the response from Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, they're, they're wanting to wrap it up.
Okay.
But, uh, they seem, it's all correspondence only, you know, but they seem patient with the meeting.
All right. Both the board report next to me. Uh, the beautification meeting?
We haven't met since the last... We haven't met since the last meeting, haven't we?
What's that?
We haven't met since the last meeting.
No, we haven't. So, uh, just a brief report. Yeah, we are winding down, um, for this season. I think we're gonna have one more meeting in November. Uh, and I'm thinking that we're probably going to hold off until March. So, but to sum up briefly, we have a working fountain and a much more attractive Centennial Plaza thanks to efforts of Reverend Bob Aldo. Uh, we have two new benches on city property right now, and one at Sam, in front of Sam, which I assume most of you have seen by now. And by the way, that, the one at Sam is an example of the red, what I would call art seat bench, um, so you can take a look at that and see what you think. Try it out, sit on it, and see if you think it would be good for city property at various locations. So, and I, I think possibly, question?
Could you repeat what you just said? I think I misunderstood something.
About what?
About the bench in front of Sam.
In front of Sam, there's a, the red bench in front of Sam, that's the lowest bench we've talked about. But it's on private property, it's not on city property, so I don't think it comes under the purview of the city council at this point.
It's not on the sidewalk, it's set back?
No, no, it's on, in the set back. I mean, they've got another bench there, a wooden bench, it's already, it's been there for quite a while too, on the set back, not on city property, so I think we're good with that.
But you, I'm sorry, but you'd like people to go there, experience and see if it's appropriate?
It's the other, it's the other style, you know, that we discussed, it could go on city property. I think we established that the black bench has been officially approved, the red bench is still kind of under consideration. In fact, that was the one that was tabled, wasn't it? Okay. So...
Hold on, hold on, guys, let's let Tim finish up here, thank you.
Yeah, we're the only child, you gotta pay attention. The, uh... So the library bench also, I think, may be coming before you sometime down the road or not, I'm not sure.
The, uh, the library bench, it's, the council approved that you worked with staff on getting it in placement and, uh, we were talking to it, it's been placed, there's discussion, I think you worked with our coworkers, supervisor, a little man on, uh, the long term.
Right, yeah, they were all placed. Um, the, so the, the bench right now is, you know, has a beautiful view of Ann Town, you can also check that one out. I think it may need a little aesthetic enhancement. Ann Powers, who is the person who donated money for the bench, has suggested, she's also one of our flower people on the beautification committee, she suggests that we put, you know, a, a planter, a wide, a long planter in back of the bench with, of course, flowers to kind of enhance the aesthetics of it, so. But that would be for next season, we're gonna take it down, remove it, um, the, I think before Thanksgiving, so we don't get involved, go get, have a concept of the summer removal operations and so forth, so. So, you know, benches seem like, in some ways may seem like a small thing, but I really think they make a statement, uh, not just, just not just for sitting on, but it makes a statement about entering how we feel about visitors, and it's, you know, saying, hey, sit around, welcome you, uh, you know, relax, check this out, you know, and so forth, so it's a welcoming thing, as, as other things are that we put up. Um, so let's see. We're still waiting on the donation form at City Hall. I submitted a, a sample donation form that we, for people that want to donate to, uh, you know, the beautification committee projects, and I have not heard that one, so we're still waiting on...
Did you send it to Pam?
I think you, you made it forward to her, yeah.
You might wanna send it again.
Okay.
I don't remember.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of details.
So the, that form just needs approval from the city manager, basically? Is that...
Yeah, it just, I mean, it needs to be established at the front desk there so that when, you know, the staff is aware, when somebody comes in to write a check to the beautificer, who do they make it at, and then there's a simple form that says they can indicate what beautification project they want to go to. So we'll have a record of that. Bryce, did you have anything on the...
No, unfortunately I haven't, I haven't received any updates, um, from, from the P on that. I did receive in my box here, truly, pretty important stuff. Oh, okay, I think I found a lovely picture of, of the fountain as it was in that spot before, so, uh... And maybe, maybe I might take another stab at reaching out to the U B person and include this as a, some inspiration.
Anything on the three city areas in Salt Lake?
I'm still trying to form a tree board.
I know, okay, you're still working on that.
Yeah, it's, it's, this is not gonna be done within a year. The tree ordinance itself is going to be...
Okay.
...sticking.
Okay, thank you, Senator. All right, um, last, or no, second to last, is the Maryland Task Force, we had a meeting two nights ago, on Tuesday. Uh, we've been meeting, um, every other week for a few months now, a couple of months. Looks like we're, I, I feel like we're pretty close to, um, having some consensus on an ordinance for, um, with regard to cultivation and perhaps dispensaries. There's some other issues that we may need to table before the January 1st deadline, but hopefully we could get, get to them. Bottom line is our next meeting is in here Tuesday, uh, we're gonna move to, I think, weekly meetings, or at least our next meeting is next Tuesday at 6:30 right here in this room.
Our city attorney has agreed.
Oh, great, and the city attorney will be there for that meeting? Okay?
Okay, um, if we could turn on the projector here, I believe we're ready to go. Uh, what I wanted to talk about was an exciting visit that we had last Friday. And kind of put it in perspective, uh, the image we'll have up here, hopefully, let's see. Is it right there? Yeah, okay. So this was taken, um, in the Chamber Conference Room, and, uh, attending this were a group of people, a group of educators from Quin Yang City in China. Um, it's a city of about three billion people, it exists, um, kind of to the northwest of Hong Kong, and, um, the people that are visiting here, um, it's pretty obvious, I think, who, you know, the red people here, the other folks are, are them. Uh, they're educators, top educators from that city, and they have a program they're exploring where what they wanna do is bring over a hundred students from their city and bring them to a location somewhere in the United States, they're looking up and down the coast, they've visited several cities before here, I forget the other ones, I know they were in Reading. They came here afterwards, uh, they went up to College of the Siskiyou, so they were welcomed there. Uh, right now, this is all just exploratory, and, uh, what's happening here is that Ray Keller, principal of the high school, is sitting down with the head of their delegation, they're signing, um, a, uh, 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 form saying that they're gonna become sister high, sister schools essentially. So they're exploring at the school level how it might work if these students were to come here instead of other cities. And this is something that Mark Juarez, you can see him in the back left-hand corner there, uh, this is something he's been working on for a number of years. Um, I was involved in this and at this meeting representing the city because I had been working with Mark on this for a couple of years. I met Terry Chen, I think, a year and a half ago, and, uh, right now, we're not sure how this will all play out, um, and, uh, if it does happen that they end up coming here, there obviously are all kinds of things that will have to work out, but, uh, Mr. Keller told me that he's open to the, the possibilities, and if all of a sudden a hundred students were to show up, there would obviously be increase in resources, increases in fundings, um, and there would be an expansion that would, uh, I think, benefit both, both, uh, groups of students. Obviously, another large part of this is that Mr. Juarez is proposing that the Dunsmere Hotel be turned into a dormitory for this. Obviously, there's a whole question about how that might happen, um, considering Mark, and, uh, the information I've been getting was that, um, if this were to happen, he'd be willing to do what was necessary to bring the air conditioning, other things up to speed to make it a quality situation. Now, uh, all, all I'm saying from the city standpoint is I was graciously welcoming visitors, um, let's see.
Bruce, you're gonna have to tell me when I have to bring...
So, the other thing we're gonna do, uh, point out is that when they did come, they brought some gifts, um, and, uh, I'll, I'll share the first, Mark, do you wanna grab the, the back there? If that, Dave, would you, uh, pull up this, this thing and I'll explain what the, what this is? We're gonna have to find a, a place for this. Now, this was done by a famous calligrapher.
Does it go this way or up and down?
I think it's upside down. Upside down, it's upside down, yeah.
Upside down. Oh, that says it goes this way.
Just a second here.
Good save, Dave. We did, right?
One, one of the things about this is it's a local artist from a province in China that they came from, and the person that did this is an artist and a calligrapher, and it's renowned in China for its creativity, so it's pretty special, what it is.
And, uh, the translation, um, I think it reads, "Right to left, each one of these is a different word, loyalty, trustworthy, kindness, and discipline." They also gave one of these, again, from the same artist that went to the high school that basically is meant to be a phrase that, that makes you feel comfortable at home. They also have a mountain city, so that was what was behind that. And then finally, uh, thank you, gentlemen. Finally, on top of that, um, and this brings up the idea that you may wanna consider coming up with a gift we may wanna have for other situations like this, but it looks like a book, not a book. This is, uh, representing pamphlets, and it's a beautiful thing, it's got, I think, I'm not sure what the metal is, but I'll pass this around and, uh, we'll find a place to put it in the city. Do you wanna hold it and look at it? And I'll pass it the other way. So I just wanted to point out, thank you for the PowerPoint, that's all we need, thank you. I just wanted to point out that, uh, uh, I guess we were the only city that didn't know that we were gonna be doing gifting, so we may wanna consider in the future that what a gift might be, maybe we could have somebody help us decide what an appropriate gift would be, and, uh, and then we could maybe have it ready for other situations like this, and even perhaps send something over there. But either way, I think this is really exciting, who knows if it'll happen? But, um, here you go. Who knows if it will happen, but, uh, a little bit of support every venture going forward that has possibility of helping this grow and become better, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you for, uh, representing the city there, that was wonderful.
Uh, Bruce, next time you have a presentation, hand up your email so I can bring you the long distance, so...
Yes. Yes, you're all set, you're all set. Thank you.
I'll just take a look at that after, Dave. Yes, all right, thank you. All right, um, moving on, item seven, announcements and public comments. Anyone else have any comments on anything that's not on our agenda tonight, now's the time?
Good evening, there mayor, council members in the public. My name's Peter Arch, 5859 Dunsmere Avenue, Dunsmere, California. I have three items, the first is in reference to the committee reports specifically broadband, item eight. It was generally announced including a local newspaper that California State Assembly Republican Leader Brian Dahl successfully authored AB 1665 on rural broadband, and the purpose of the bill is to bring rural areas of California into parity with urban areas of California as far as having broadband access. Also, I'll read the blurb from our paper. AB 1665, according to a press release, sets a goal of providing broadband access to ninety-eight percent of California households. To reach that goal, California Public Utilities will work with internet providers and communities to fund cost-effective projects to expand high-speed internet options. So it's highly likely that the commission will be the intermediary for providing funds to communities like ours and our two sister communities, getting to municipal broadband service as soon as possible. I know the mayor has a number of contacts, I'm sure Supervisor Rick Dahl is willing to be happy to use his position with the local caucus, and perhaps this could be a significant amount of funding help to the three cities with municipal broadband. My second item sort of relates to the aspirations of the city around repairing its sidewalks with regards to street trees, and in that regard, I'm handing Julie 70, 7 copies of a claim on violation of the city for the damage that's been done to the paving line installed in front of the pops. If you go down and look, you'll see one of the three trees that from the two parcels that are now pops, the indoor and outdoor venue, it is totally heaved up the pavers I installed, it's heaved up the tree well that was brand new two years ago, pretty soon it will probably crack the brand new curb. Uh, all of that was installed at my expense, Victor and I have done our best to keep the property more attractive. The street tree is not only heaving up the sidewalk in an unsafe and unattractive way, it's also threatening the integrity of the roof structure. The branches of the roof are pushing, excuse me, the branches of the tree are pushing on the corner of the roof. The city tried to do some trimming, but in a storm, uh, the roof is very much at risk being damaged by the street tree. Finally, item three is a complaint against Mr. Juarez for his building at 5731, 5733, and 5735 Dunsmere Avenue, that's one as the annex to the theater. I think anyone that goes and looks, including the city code enforcement office, will conclude that building burned out by fire last year. The front needs painting. The doors have chipboard instead of glass in the front of them, the tile in the front is cracked. Some of us, the Dunsmere Brewing Works, the rallies, bombs away, we've painted our buildings using local labor, we've maintained our buildings to beautify the historic district, this sticks out like a sore thumb. So, I know the city has set sidewalks for priority, it's time to start dealing with sidewalks and street trees. We've said code enforcement is a priority, and all of you that raised your hand and said you're gonna uphold the law, clearly, if you look at the historic district ordinance in the state of that building, it doesn't pass muster. Under the law, you're supposed to have sixty days to fix it. So I would hope in the next sixty days, the building is brought into compliance with the city's historic district code. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any, uh, comments? Okay, we will move on. Item eight, announcements and reports from council on staff. Did you get it, um, ready again?
Yeah, thank you, uh, just a couple things. Uh, yesterday I went to the LTC meeting, uh, we applied for a grant, uh, to put in some sidewalk, uh, in concert with, uh, some bus shelters that we're looking at doing, and, uh, there was five agencies that were competing for the grant, and Dunsmere did get some grant funds, we're, we're looking at about thirty-five thousand dollars. So the, uh, we're looking at doing sidewalk, curb, gutter, work in front of the city hall area on that side parking lot, where we're looking for a bus shelter going, a hospital going over at the US Bank area. So, uh, we're looking at addressing a tree issue, especially on the, by the US Bank, uh, area, um, and, uh, getting a small, uh, bus seat there, we call it a semi-seat on that area, but over there, just go to the city hall and that parking lot would be a bus shelter.
Um, could you take this opportunity, I know you've been working with the county on working out the, the logistics, but as you've explained it to me, and I think they would wanna know that you're making sure that as the new bus stops come in, we take advantage of that in the sidewalk repairs, is that right?
Yeah, one of the best, I mean, really the strategy I was looking at in the grant application was trying to work with, uh, the city goals, one being sidewalks and another one being infrastructure, and working with the LTC goals, having, uh, safe pedestrian safety, uh, bus driver's safety, uh, line of sight visibility, so there's no confusion as to where people need to go to get buses. And this, this project here, I think, meets both our goals and their goals together, where we can create, uh, a good, safe space for bus shelters and also provide, uh, some much needed sidewalk, curb, and gutter. Since we didn't get, we didn't get the full amount I was asking for, but I think we have enough to where we can maybe do that, uh, right here in the civic area of Dunsmere. And with that, we also have, uh, the additional money that was approved in the budget this year, so we're looking at, uh, focusing on, on a lot of the tree issues in this area, along with the Veterans Fountain area, we're looking at spending that money down here. So when we do put the bus shelters in, we'll also look at, uh, some around this area with the trees as well. And with the trees that Candace, uh, put in her report and council altered, I've got the four trees. So we'll, we'll start doing this, uh, kind of a test pilot as to how, how it can look to the city.
Can I ask you a question? Only two bus stops are gonna go in?
Uh, we, we got thirty-five thousand dollars, so we're, we're looking to do as much as we can with that, uh, hopefully the two bus stop.
Do you think that, uh, is any chance you're gonna put one down by Children's Park?
That one's gonna probably be in next month.
Okay, next month?
Next month.
Oh, great.
It's, uh, they already have it in stock, uh, they're scheduling to have the, the installers come in and put it in.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification there, the, the bus stop installations are no cost to the city, right?
No cost.
That's not coming out of the grant funds that I've just got to, uh...
Uh, and with that, also Melissa, uh, the executive director for the LTC, said that along with what we have from the, the grant funds, there may be additional funds to help with, uh, possible engineering or something that we have to do with the actual placement of where the bench is gonna go, so, um, I'm, I think we're gonna have a really good project to accomplish, even though it's less than what we asked for.
I'm sure you do ask, huh?
Uh, we're looking for eighty-five thousand, yeah, we, we got about thirty-five, so we're scaling back the project, but it'll still work.
Um, before we go around, I just do wanna say thank you and congratulations on getting that grant for the city. It was less than, than we wanted, but, um, with five different agencies competing for the money, we didn't get a fifth of the money, we got more like a third.
Right.
Half of the money, so, um, yeah. Congratulations and, and well done, well done, congratulations, thank you.
I just have one more thing to report, I met with Crystal from, uh, Fourth Foundation, and, uh, and, uh, we discussed working with, uh, having this, uh, goals, the mission vision goals that we've been talking about, um, and they're looking at possibly assisting with the, uh, mission vision goal session, they're, you know, they just wanna do what they can to get as much of the community to be involved in this, which, you know, we want as well, to get a really diverse stakeholder group to come in here and assist with developing, the mission vision build, so. Uh, good meeting, she's gonna send me, uh, some forms that I can work out, and also qualify for assistance.
It's Mark.
Good job.
Mark, anybody have any comments or announcements?
Fall is here, winter is not far behind, get your snowplows ready.
And your cameras, it's beautiful out there with all, all color.
Well, right now, I mean, my street is gorgeous. I'm dreading three months from now.
We need to put together a list of volunteers who wanna shovel, not use that driveway. Get the list sent out.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to just, uh, make sure that Josh comes to the city council meetings, he may need to be giving rides, I don't know how to drive. I don't know how to drive in snow.
Chris? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to report on that meeting we had with the Ford Family Institute. I know you weren't able to make that, but at the same time, I think everything went very well. I'll explain what happened. I've been working with the Ford Family Institute on a couple of different projects. One of them was the First Impressions Project, which I worked on last year, that Richard Dinges kind of put together and worked on. And then I also got involved as a follow-up to the Hunger Town Hall we had recently. I got invited, thanks to Alex Rivera, to represent, to be a speaker at a regional look at hunger that was supported by the Ford Family Institute. And we talked about how we had gotten together with all the folks around the city and done all of this, and helped put on this seminar, and helped the town hall, and helped gather a bunch of good information that maybe other cities might be able to follow. After that, I got an email from Crystal Aspen, who is the person from Mount Chass that represents the Ford Family Institute, and she asked me if I could get together a bunch of people in the community that were involved in various programs that help support the community. And of course, it was a long list of people I could have turned to. There were quite a few Rotarians there, city manager was there, Richard Dinges was there, and also Helen Erd, who's the superintendent and principal of the elementary school. Anyways, out of that, I think we're some really great opportunities. There was opportunities for people to hear what type of funds are out there, what type of projects that the institute is supporting. And I'll leave it at that, but I would like to point out one thing that maybe everyone didn't know, and I'll be honest and realize I didn't know, when I heard about the Ford Institute, I assumed it had to do with the forests and the cars. It's not. It's, Ford is a fellow who built a major sawmill up in Oregon, and did at one time, or maybe still lives, the largest privately-owned company in the country. And so that's where the funding for a lot of the projects that support Siskiyou County come from. The institute supports Southern Oregon and Siskiyou County specifically. So it was a great meeting, and hopefully a lot of good things will come out of it. Thank you.
I knew that the Ford Foundation.
I did. Chris?
They support the Botanical Gardens, or have, on grants.
Dave? Yeah, I got a couple things. First of all, I, I, I would like to comment on Mr. Ars' comments. The man does, just, just because, I think it's imperative, he does spend a lot of money on his buildings, he does hire local labor to keep his buildings, you know, looking, looking pretty good. And it, some of the issues that he mentioned really should be addressed, whether it cannot be by council, it should be by someone. So I would just, my feelings are, we maybe need to look into that really, really good because there's only one, we don't need some more. Okay, and so, and the other thing is, at the neighborhood watch the other night, it was mentioned, I was just seeing if you would say anything, but everybody that burns firewood should check their chimneys. We're going into winter, now's the time. I understand the chimney people are really busy, but you should call and get an appointment. That's number one issue is chimney fires. They can be prevented. If everybody didn't notice, Marty's haunted house is open. I think that, the other things I think that was mentioned is maybe some, some way we could come up with a senior list of people that meet a certain criteria, that if in case they got, you know, we got snow, that we could snow plow, have the volunteers, that we could snow plow for these certain individuals. I have two snowplows that I'd be willing to let people use to help people if, if that's what need to be, but there are times when elderly can't get out there and shovel their sidewalks, and they got nobody to go. Mount Chass has got some kind of program. I think that we need to look at some kind of program for ourselves, and...
If there is anybody out there like that, I think just go down to Alex Rivera, down at the Resource Center, and let her know. I know she's been wanting to collect this information, so thank you.
Well, let's do that. Let's make sure that we're going to do that. If you got, that's where everybody's going to go. Now, if you want to help out, be on either the list that you needed, or you want to be on the list that you want to help, please go to the Resource Center. Halloween's coming, just make sure all your kids are safe. And I want to end that, I'm pretty proud of this because we had a big part in it, but AB 649 got vetoed, so...
Tell people what that is?
That was the one where the telecommunications people, they were going to put this device, and it's about the size of that podium, or a little bit bigger.
You can speak to it as well, Dave.
Yeah, and they can, they can put it on the side of your building, they can put it on the side of the city hall, nothing we can do about it. We couldn't charge fair market rent. They could come around with their meter and this, oh, right here, they could literally put that thing in your driveway behind your car, and you can't back up your car, you cannot move it, there is nothing you could do about it. It passed assembly. I know, I know, right? But it did get vetoed by our governor, who's a sensible man. I congratulate him and thank him, and so, anyway.
All right, all right. Is that?
I looked at it, I think looked at one, if it was open to public comment, it was appropriate time, I thought we should pay attention to them, so I thought maybe we could have a meeting.
Sounds great.
And if we're up here, if anybody wanted to come after me, I'd better not pass this thing around. We should get a case, right? We all kind of agree, so, is that cool?
Of course. Anything else?
No. AB 649, it didn't make the law, so...
Yeah, I think it's SB 649, and just to, you know, the council did draft a statement of opposition, that the League of California Cities has asked a bunch of cities to, to do that, and we did that a couple of months ago, I think. It's just, it's a good example that, that there are powerful lobbying interests in Sacramento, but they don't always win out. You can kind of look at this issue, it's not a totally black and white issue, obviously we need more connectivity in rural areas, and if you're on the telecommunications company's side on this one, then, then that's what you would say, you'd say, well, we're trying to expand coverage in rural areas and all throughout the state, but there, it seems to me, and I think everyone agreed, that there's potentially a better way to go about doing it, that, that maintains the local control, and that was the main thing that we were fighting for, and that the league was fighting for on our behalf. So I want to thank the League of California Cities, obviously, for that, and thank Governor Brown for vetoing it. It passed through the assembly and the senate with huge majorities, it just skated right through. Our own assemblyman and state senator voted in favor of it. But, you know, good arguments can be made on both sides on this one, and if you read the governor's signing statement, he said, you know, please, please bring us back a bill that maintains the local control, but achieves these goals. So anyway, I was happy to see that that was vetoed as well. The only other thing I wanted to bring up was, I wanted to thank Clemmons Waste Removal. In my neighborhood in North Dunzvere, I've had just almost every other day or week, bear knocking over the trash in several areas of the neighborhood, and sometimes before me and my wife were able to get out there and clean it up, at least on Monday mornings when Clemmons was coming around, I saw, is it Diane from Clemmons? Out there on her knees cleaning up my trash. So I feel like they've been going above and beyond, at least in my neighborhood, and I think all over town, so if you see those folks at Clemmons, give them a pat on the back and tell them thanks.
Some people don't realize, if I'm right, it's just a simple bungee cord.
Yeah, I got to start.
Yeah, you got to start doing that.
Yeah.
I put, I got two in the front, one across the top. They'll kick it around the street.
And at some point, in the, in the past, we did look at trying to get bear-proof cans, and that was sort of...
The truck can't pick them up.
The truck can't pick them up and process them, so, anyway, if that's an issue in your neighborhood, perhaps the bungee cord solution's the way to go.
Six-packs, they'll pick up the trash no more.
Uh, that's all I've got. Mr. Mayor, anything?
Yes, just two things. I wanted to just let you know that this is a nationwide domestic violence awareness fund, so the Siskiyou County Sheriff's Department is going to be partnering with the other long-term basis in Siskiyou County, as well as throughout the nation, specifically pursuing domestic violence offenders, whether it be serving warrants, search warrants, probation, any of those type of things, and making sure that those people are doing that. So again, just something to be mindful of that. If you hear something or you see something, please report it. Just too much, even now, these days, just too much of that occurs, we need to work more on that. Also, there are National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. I remember four or five months ago, we had an opportunity to get prescription medications, rather than burning them, which is bad, don't do that, or flushing them down the toilet, which is bad, don't do that, it messes up the bugs, they get all weird down there. We are going to be collecting them, so bi-annually, now we're going to do that rarely, so October twenty-eighth, from ten o'clock in the morning to two o'clock in the afternoon, front of the Dunzvere substation, is going to be a collection center, so if you have prescriptions medications, just simply put them in a Ziploc bag, use your Sharpie or tear off the label to make sure no private information's going to get out. Bring those, we'll be able to collect those. They're going south to incinerators where they can separate them and do all those kind of things safely, so it's really a great way to be able to collect those, that are not going into our environment, or get out into the streets, indoor parks, or any of those kind of things, and so please remember that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sergeant Mero. There's anything else from the council?
That was kind of imperative, just the fact what one, I'd like to reiterate that, man, don't flush your pills down the toilet because it messes up the bugs and sanitation plant, and it, and it, they get all weird down, and they don't do their jobs, and then we get fined because the water's not the way it's supposed to be. I think that's a crucial point to make and reiterate to the folks, don't put them down the toilet.
Yeah, I didn't realize how hard it was to restart that thing.
As soon as you said that, I was like, oh.
And it happens more often than it should, and really puts us behind in the schedule of processing those things we need to do. It's quite expensive in the city to keep reproducing the bacteria time and time again, getting them up to the levels that they need to be able to, to do their job on maintaining that. So this is free, it's easy, you swing by, they were, they were watching, being involved, but maybe it hasn't, could use the trade or something, I don't know, we'll figure out something, but.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sergeant Mero.
President?
Yes, Chris?
Yeah, just, just one quick comment. The one thing I think that really turned the tide with SB 649 was the fact that Governor Brown was the mayor of Oakland before, and so the idea of local control, I think, but I thought everyone was pretty much feeling it was a lost cause when we were down there in Sacramento, that was kind of a desperate feeling, so it was a good, a good thing to see that come about, you know, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item nine. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is nine A, certification of appreciation for Candace Miller. Let me go up here. I'm not sure if anybody wants to talk about it. Let's go, you know. So I've known Candace for a few years, I'm sure many of you have known her in this town much longer than I have. But let me just go ahead and read this certificate first. This is a certificate of appreciation. This certificate of appreciation has been presented to Candace Miller for your many contributions to the city of Dunzvere and the beautification of our streets and parks, presented this nineteenth day of October twenty-seventh. Candace is moving away.
Oh.
And I think we all can, we all echo those sentiments. If we could echo that, we would.
Yeah.
I guess we can. Recently, you worked with us on the tree removal, and helping us flag these trees for removal. She's, she's helped the city time and time again when called upon, and then you know what, she's been sort of worked with the Botanical Gardens, right? For how many years did you do that?
I've been a horticulturist there for eleven years.
And the library as well. So it's a model Dunzvere citizen, and I thank you again very much.
Oh, thank you.
You won me this. And we do wish you the best of luck.
Oh, thank you. And I did want to say that Ernie Wasson will be taking over as a horticulturist with the Botanical Gardens. He's extremely qualified and very passionate and...
He has master's degrees.
He did a wonderful job, and I turned over my treasure job with the board, library board, to Bob Bonding, and I think he'll do an excellent job as well, so.
I know that her license you want, though.
And it's not just that she doesn't want to shovel snow, she's moving to Michigan or something, right?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you so much, Candace.
Thank you for, for this one. That means a lot.
Okay, now we have item nine B, Treasury Report from Mario Vino. Hopefully this is as joyous an occasion as the last presentation.
Actually, Candace should brag about her kid and all that, too. She raised a kid here, and the kid raised another important kid in this town, so she did go on. Council, tomorrow we're going to be signing payroll checks, it's going to be Karen's first payroll check, I guess alone, so you probably want to know that we have about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in our checking account. And right now, in our local agency investment fund, we have about one point six billion dollars. That's an aggregate of quite a few different funds, or all of our funds. If you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer. Again, I'm very proud of the city manager and the financial manager, I think they're doing a wonderful job, I think they stabilized the community financials very well, and I'm very thankful.
Thank you, Mario, and I just want to echo those sentiments.
This guy's a nice kid here, you know?
I don't think we have money, Dave.
I think, I think they've heard that one million and all, something about that we work on the spam.
That money's slow before. There you go, Dave.
I could have pointed out, we have two hundred and about sixty thousand dollars left in the general, and of that, some quantity is attached, so it, it isn't like the city has a lot of money to spend, those, those funds are for different purposes, so.
Thank you, Mario. But I do want to just echo the sentiment of Mario there in terms of thanking our city manager and finance director. Ever since I was, have been on the city council and been paying attention to city government and municipal financing, I've never seen it be quite as in, as solid a shape as it, as it is right now, in terms of at least the transparency and the information that the council receives, and I just really appreciate when we get our agendas, having the fiscal impact stated, all of the, all of the reports, it's, it's really beneficial, not just to the public, but to us as well, so, thank you, Mark. Okay, moving on to item ten, consent agenda. There are two items, A and B, resolution LAIF authorizing and removing the signers. These are the people who are signing on checks that were authorized to do that, and the resolution just states that they're removing the old city managers and adding a new one, and the new person in the office, Karen, and then the check register for October first through the sixteenth. So is there a motion to...
I want to motion to adopt consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was unanimous, thank you. Moving on, we have no public hearing tonight, we also have no old business. Item thirteen, new business, A, resolution Parks and Rec appointments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Reporting today is a resolution to appoint two personnel to the Parks and Rec Board. We received two applications that we, we had, these two vacancies have been up for quite some time, we've done some advertisement, haven't had a whole lot of success, so some people went out to really beat the bushes, and we have two brave souls that are stepping forward to take that role. We've put their names in the resolution, should the council decide to place them into this role. There is one other vacancy that is for the county to place into the Parks and Rec as well, so we just have the two that are city-appointed that are reporting today. Him, Dave, are in the audience as well, if you'd like to ask any questions as well.
All right. Could we possibly meet them? Yes, of course. I think there's no real, you'd write a wrong way to do this, but why don't we go ladies first and invite Miss Canacanway up? Just go up to the podium. Now, I wonder if we can grill each of the applicants.
No more than eight minutes.
Yeah, and we want to know from the day you were born...
Yeah, now we want to know from the day you were born.
Well, we've all had a chance to read the application, and I want to just echo the sentiments, thank you for putting your name in the hat here. Can you just tell us a little bit about why you want to serve on the rec board?
It's just a way for me to further my doing volunteer work for the community, and I really don't want to be on the city council.
Lord, can I? You have to be so specific. I think we can all understand those.
I just feel it's a way I can do something for the community.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Is there any, does anyone have any questions for Kenna?
No, good.
Okay.
We all both got them.
You're not planning on leaving the planning commission?
Oh, no, no. I'm planning to reach out until June, and I think it's 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our other applicant, excuse me, is Chris Langston. Is Chris here?
Sure is.
Come on up.
Good boy, Chris.
I think we've all, we all know Kenna from the planning commission, but I think some of us don't know Chris as well, so why don't you tell us a little about yourself and why you want to be on the Parks and Rec Board?
I want to be on the Parks and Rec Board because my heart predestined me to be.
Good answer.
I love this community. I pastor at Duncevere Christian Life Center. Been here 15 years, still a visitor. You're not an insider unless you born here, I guess, so. Love this town, love the people, and I work in that.
All right, any questions for Chris?
I do. Chris, what do you be doing Saturday night?
Nothing, it was canceled.
Oh, brother. Well, I'm talking about, aren't you getting an award from the...
It just posted it earlier.
I didn't know that. Well, anyway, congratulations on winning the Service Surveillance and Leadership Award.
Oh, wonderful.
I didn't win it, my trophy did. Back to us, we need him.
Hey, I personally think you know him both. He's kind of like a pastor. His wife, whenever I was in hospital and having all the surgeries, I'd open my eyes and it was always her taking care of it. So I've always been a good hand, you're both people. I'm good with both of them.
All right, well, is there a resolution here?
Yeah.
Resolution two, you need a number, right?
Okay.
You gotta go ahead.
Twelve? I made the most, I don't have verbiage. Is there verbiage?
There's a resolution right there.
Okay, well, I made the motion that we adopt Resolution 2017-12, appointing Ms. Kenna Conway and Mr. Chris Langston to the city council, as the city council's appointee to the Park and Recreation District Board. Hey, that was all for example.
Hey, that works for me. And those terms are expiring June 30th, 2021?
I guess we didn't have a public comment, did we?
Oh, you're right.
I see a public...
I apologize for that. Thank you. I have a slip back, so I'm not turning you guys either, so I couldn't catch you out of the far my eye. Thank you for pointing that out. Let's have a public comment, welcome to the board, thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and get your second first? I don't want to interrupt.
No, 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 that's, we can redo the motion.
I feel the same way. Thank you to the two candidates for stepping up. I got an opportunity with both, and I think they're both truly connected to and committed to our community, and that's a big plus for this type of a job. I'm wise really because I am friends with a community member who served on the Parks and Rec Board for about five years and ultimately resigned. He actually has become active in the Mossbury Trail Committee. Well, why did you resign? Well, because there was no vision, there was no plan, there was no budget. And so as I heard earlier in your meeting, the talk that the city council is actually going to start looking at mission and vision and roles the city manager council needs to do, that so also should attach to this. The assets under the control of the district include the community pool, a number of buildings, some of it dated, oversight with Town and Valley Park and Mossbury Trail. Potentially, our Parks and Recreation District, never mind Babe Ruth Ballpark, could be a huge asset to this community if the well-serving, hard-working committee members could actually have enough support to go through, A, for the facilities that are falling apart. What's the wisest use of prop P funds? The community wants to support the rec district and its facilities. Can't there be a stronger link between this city of less than 2,500 people, its park and rec district, the key asset for our kids and old people, the city park, the candidates that we're working so hard on? I think we can do much better, government to government, if you will. It is a district, it could receive grants, it could receive funding. There are a lot of things that could be done to make much better use of the assets that the district controls that is now occurring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
Any other public comments? All right.
We have comments before we finish the...
Yeah, certainly.
Well said. So I just wanted to say that we do have this measure P, and we've got a new process that's been in place now, and we have a deadline coming up for the next annual submission for support. We're anticipating it being larger than in the past because of Dollar General, if nothing else. I think the idea would be, know that there might be some funds there, articulate those, and come up with a pathway, and be ready for the deadline coming forward. Did you hear that, Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely. Get the applications in and just...
Good call.
Thank you. All right, back to the resolution.
A second.
Oh, yeah, good girl.
I don't think we need to restate the motion. I think it's fine. So there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Sergeant Marrow.
Thank you, guys, for stepping up.
And I share in that vision that, you know, maybe during, whether it's one workshop or a series of workshops that we do, that will at a minimum involve the Parks and Rec Board, and try to get as much of the community to those visioning sessions as possible. But I too would love to see a stronger link between the rec department, the district, and the city.
You're supposed to bake cookies when we go.
Okay, that's, it's going to happen. Okay, moving on to item 13B, Budget Amendment, COPS Funds. I read this report, it sounded like good news.
It's a mix.
Yeah, I know. You can say that again.
Yeah, there's some really good news in that we received word from the county auditor's office that the city is going to receive a gross allocation increase for the COPS fund this year of $39,416.41. They need to show that that number is going to be amended into our budget so that they can then release the funds to show that we are spending appropriately. So very good news, that's going to help balance our budget this year, which is something that probably hasn't happened in a while, so it's actually very positive.
Could you say that again louder, please?
Very good news, it's going to help balance our budget. But I probably should have put the negative first, but the downside is I'm also requesting to increase my budget by $4,821 to, in the line item of, what, is for the unemployment insurance, is what it's for. We did receive notice that we are going to be getting an invoice from the EDD for unemployment claim that has come in and was unbudgeted. We believe that our total amount that is going to, that is owed for the claim is the amount that I put in here for the budget amendment, which is $4,821. We don't expect any more to have come out of our coffers for that claim, since the claim is from someone that only worked here for a short time. The city is working with our legal counsel to look at taking some course of action with the EDD to dispute the charge. Unfortunately, when the due process that they have, they sent out a letter, the city didn't have, they had 10 days to respond. It was during a time when the city manager was leaving, and there was a time when there was no city manager. There was action that was taken, but it missed the 10-day deadline. But there is still a process where the city can submit a request, so our legal counsel is going to do that. And they also advise that we pay the amounts that we were invoiced, and if we can, we'll try to get those, invoice those amounts paid back.
By that individual?
Don't know that process.
I guess for transparency, the individual needs to be named.
I'm not sure if it's a good thing.
I don't think, no.
Okay, I didn't know.
No, you opened it up. I need to ask you a question.
Thank you, Mark. We'll begin with money. Any questions?
Yes, you sent us an email on this, and I replied, and I asked you what would be the ramifications to the city if we do not pay the EDD. I didn't get a response back.
Neither did I. So that is a question for our legal counsel. I included our legal counsel in that question, and it's being...
Make it a lot.
The concern I have, which is my concern, not the legal counsel's concern, is that the EDD is separate from the issue with the individual. They're following their policies and procedures, and their due processes. The city was, unfortunately, did not fall in line with their process, so we have to, the issue isn't with EDD as much as it is with what we believe is an unfair benefit that the person is receiving. We don't believe that it's warranted because of the terms of the appointment. So since the issue is primarily with the terms and not EDD, it's best to work through their process, let's be honest with you. But there are other, there could be some other course of action as well. It's also a benefit of how much money do you want to spend on the terms fees as well?
But our lawyer's saying, right now, go ahead and pay it. And you're asking us to grant you the extra $4,000?
Well, I'd like to finish my question.
Okay, well, I'm just...
Are you receiving?
Yes, go ahead, Marty.
What, this is three days old now, why did, why did he not respond?
Why?
Yeah, you sent this email, you know, I gave you my response, my, you know, my question, and I saw that he went to our attorney, and it's taking this long to respond to. We have a city council meeting, and I was hoping that we could put this to rest. I really don't think that once we pay it out, we're never going to see anything.
I do know that the attorney that I was working with on this issue is working on other things as well. I did receive an email back from him on a separate issue we worked on, this thing that has to do with lease agreement. This particular issue, I don't deal with EDD, that's probably who he's having to get in contact with. All the calls I've made, it's all come true. I couldn't talk to more questions. So it's probably not as easy to respond to him to get back to us.
Question, is there a deadline on making a decision on this?
No, just the, I would say, if we pay the bill, well, we just leave the budget somewhere, and we don't have any money. So for me to pay the bill, I need to have a little where to pay it from. So there's two points. One is to do the budget amendment, and the other would be to allow...
So you're asking, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're asking that you'd like to have the structure set up so that later on, if we do decide to pay it, we can wait till November 2nd to make a decision on how we want to proceed? Maybe do a closed session on it, where we can talk a little more freely?
I'm not sure if we can. I don't think we can do a closed session, it's not in employ anymore.
Oh, I have. So either way, could we put it on?
Still, basically, the thing again with the city, that the city's paying out money.
It's a claim with EDD.
Still, the city's paying out money?
Right.
We can have a closed session on it.
I just have to get legal counsel on that.
I'm all, I don't have a signature, if you have a closed session, it's after the month.
Any other questions for Mark?
No.
All right, we'll have public comment?
Quickly, if I may, there could be fines associated with not paying the EDD in a timely matter, and that hasn't been brought up, so.
I don't, did you repeat that, Mario? I didn't get that.
I just said there could be fines associated with not paying the EDD fine in a timely matter, which would be more costly than...
Are there any other public comments on the item? Okay, we'll close the podium then. My thoughts are that nobody, I don't think, is happy about the situation. We'd all rather be in a different situation than this, but I think we're, we're all adults, and we pay our bills, and the city should pay its bills, and hopefully, you know, I'm in favor of seeking the legal counsel to try to dispute, dispute the bill if we can. But it also seems like to me that the facts of the case are, you know, the EDD has its rules, and we're going to follow them until we're told that we can, you know, maybe this is a extenuating circumstance or something. You know, in the interest of fairness, I would certainly say, yes, we should dispute it, but we should, I believe that we should also pay our bills until we have, you know, counsel that we can, we can dispute it. So I'm certainly in favor of paying the bill for now and granting you the budget a bit, and then so that we can do that. It's, of course, it's unfortunate, and I'd rather not be in this position, but...
This is a quick question on the amendment itself. Is the suggested motion and the numbers still correct? I see a $7,003.21. Is that what you need to work it through, and then it's actually $4,000, or I hear two numbers there?
Oh, that's correct. So the, thank you for pointing that out. The notice that we received from EDD, it's not invoiced yet, they might not know that it's come, is for $4,821. That's for the quarter that just finished.
Would you're anticipating that in next quarter will be the additional amount?
The additional amount, that will bring the total cost for this fiscal year up to $7,321. That's what I'm asking for, so I don't have to come back. We'll leave that at the beginning.
I move to authorize a budget amendment to the COPS Fund, 10-509-4670, an additional amount of $39,416.41 revenue with the city manager's unemployment insurance budget, 10-502-7170, and the amount of $7,321 expense.
Is there any way we can split this apart, one from the other?
Let's, thank you, Marty, let's just, is there a second on the motion that we can discuss? Okay, I'll second the motion so that we can, let's discuss it. Marty, you wanted to...
I'd like to split the two, you know, things separated out. I don't have any issue at all with the COPS Fund. I have a little bit of an issue with the second item. I would like to be able to grant the city manager to, you know, try to, you know, make space for the, for the cost, but I would like to hear back from the attorney as to what would be the really the ramifications if we did not pay that bill.
I'll be glad to withdraw my motion and restate it for the first one, and we can discuss the second. In other words, I'll take that motion and do it to authorize the COPS Fund to the budget amendment, if you want to.
I mean, you're within your right to withdraw a motion if you want to, and I share the same concern, I just don't think that we're going to, it seems to me that the attorney's going to say, pay your bill, and then let's deal with it. I don't know that...
Yes, he's already said that.
Right, he's already said that, so...
You're a little jacked.
Just a little jacked.
Well, it's a question. Is it, do you want to throw your motion?
Let me just do that. I'll withdraw the motion, and I will instead move to authorize a budget amount of amendment to the COPS Fund, 10-509-4670. to the COPS Fund, 10-509-4670, an additional amount of $39,416.41 revenue.
All right, the person who seconded the initial motion needs to, so I'll go ahead and do that procedurally. Did you second this motion, Marty?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, so this is basically just authorizing the COPS amount of $39,416.41 to make room for that in the budget, right? Okay, everyone understand? Motion?
We understand the motion, where does it leave?
There's a motion and a second, we're going to blow out the motion.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
That's a roll call for money.
We're not spending money, we're getting money.
Okay, aye.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks you guys.
Sorry, I have to go to work.
Thank you. I believe that was, are there any opposed? That was unanimous, thank you. All right, is there another motion? Any other motions?
Mark, you gotta have this, Marty. You gotta have it now?
Don't have to have it now.
Okay, then why?
We have, our agendas are getting, our next agenda is going to be pretty full, and I'm just, one of my concerns is spending a lot of money on the term fees as well. So it's, in comparison, it's a lot of money, but if just trying to fight it, depending on what we get back from the city attorney, could exceed this amount, it could go to the rest of the...
I move that we authorize the expense of $7,321 from the city manager's unemployment insurance budget, or for the city manager's unemployment insurance budget, as a budget amendment.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Bruce. I understand we don't want to pay this money, if we can get it back without spending too much attorney's fees, but we're going to spend some attorney's fees trying to fight it in the first place.
So we don't know if we have a fight, possible fight, too.
There could be. I mean, EDD, you know, this is a government agency, they're probably not likely to really do that.
They're not going to give our money back. I just want an answer, that's all I want before I say yes or no, so I'm going to probably abstain from this.
I understand, and I appreciate your concern for the budget, I do. There's a motion and a second, we'll call a vote, all in favor? Aye.
Is this spending money, or is it...
This is spending money.
Okay, it's $7,000.
Okay, is it okay if we just get a roll call vote on it?
Sure.
Okay.
Senator Shanta?
Right, Spain.
Senator Deutsch?
Aye, Greg Dilling.
Senator Vice-Law?
Aye, Greg Dilling.
May you pray.
Just an aye, thank you. Okay.
G R U D, Greg Dilling.
Thank you all, we're going to move on to our next item, but I do want to say thank you for everyone participating in the discussion and for the thoughtful consideration of the budget issues. I do appreciate it, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item, says B, I imagine, is it? I think that's C.
Yeah.
13C, citizen community formation sewer and solid waste fund.
Yes, thank you. I've talked with Pace Engineering at a conference call just a, it was five weeks ago, in regards to these sewer rate increase, or please speak, sewer rate study, to look at how to bring the sewer enterprise, especially in operation and maintenance, back up to, to balance. And they, out of our conversation, they recommended that I go to council and see about forming a committee, or getting authorization to form a committee. And also, I had conversations with them as well, about the solid waste aspect as well. So we're looking at doing a rate study for both the solid waste and for the sewer enterprises, both enterprises. And the goal of the committee is to really look at, at one, the numbers, and then two, the services. We have a challenge here, we know that the solid waste, the rates were reduced 30% to spend down on the reserves, it's very successful, we're spending down on the reserves. To go forward, what kind of services do we want to provide, solid waste? Now, that will determine what we need as a rate. Same thing for the sewer enterprise. We have a healthy sewer improvement fund, but O and M fund is, is well underfunded. So what, what do we want to do about these funds? And what we want to do is bring in the schools, the residents, the businesses, the seniors, the stakeholders who are going to be impacted by the issues. And let's talk about it. This is what we have, these are the numbers, how are we going to make them work? Let's look at options, and through the stakeholder committee, let's bring Pace in and say, this is what the committee is looking at, let's put together a formation for the rate study that will help address possibly different levels of services that we can bring to the city council, which is one of the things I call kind of the goalie locks, where you look at the small, medium, and large, and say, based on, do you want a lot of services or minimal services? And here are the costs associated with those. So this is something I'm really looking forward to getting the stakeholder group together and be a part of this discussion. It's, it's not a difficult one, other than nobody likes to talk about an increase in rates, but we, this, this community is the stakeholder, we are the investors in this infrastructure. We're not sending money to, you know, AT&amp;T or these places, whether in New York, we're talking about investing in our, in our infrastructure here in the city. And with that, you know, where are you, what kind of services do you want, and what's that going to cost? So I'm hoping that we get a good formation of a committee that has this good, honest, down home discussion.
Thank you, Mark. I just wanted to take a second to just read a paragraph here from the, from the report that you put together. That was a great summary, and I just wanted to add, under the discussion section here, you did, I thought you did a fantastic job of laying forth what, what are the numbers here, so just for the public's benefit. The sewer operations and maintenance fund, that's the O and M fund that you referred to, has not received an increase since 2011, and is currently operating at a 4% deficit. The solid waste rates, as you mentioned, were reduced by 30% in March of 2016, to spend down the surplus, and are currently operating at a 27% deficit. That's what I spent it out. So, again, it's just, we, I went through this process with the water rate study several years ago, Bruce and I served on that committee, and we didn't go into it knowing exactly those kinds of numbers. I mean, I think we did through the process, but it's just really good to be able to put, put the numbers out there before the public, especially before we even formed the committee, so that it's really clear what people, people understand the issue. I think this is a really good job of helping us frame the issue. So my only question before we have public comment, if there are any other questions, Bruce, go ahead, is what, what is the, the overall timetable for the committee's work? I know when we did the water stuff, that was, you know, the better part of the year, to have several public meetings, a rate study, and then, you know, developing a proposal, and getting it, and going through the whole Prop 218 process, which is what will have to happen with this as well. So just, ballpark, can you give us an idea of what the timetable is, and also with respect to the solid waste contract?
Can I amend that, too? Because one question I have is based on that, and that has to do with the contract, we're lining up the Clemens, that's put together with the Clemens contract.
Exactly. Yeah, the, good questions. As far as putting together this task force, if you probably start looking at advertising here, in the next two to four weeks, I'll probably work with Pace on some word, some verbiage, and getting some rough outline of dates to meet. Holidays kind of make it tough, so definitely look at, at least requesting that we get some letters of interest from, from the community. I want to do some outreach to try to get some people to beat the bushes and try to get people to come and be part of the stakeholders group, and can submit a letter of interest. I really want this, this group to be positive, not a negative thing, because this is about resolving what we want for the city, and let's focus on how we're going to do that. So I believe that the timeline would be, start accepting letters November, December, depending on the turnout, we'll start filling those seats around the first of the year, and then start aggressively having meetings through the spring, probably into early summer. We do have the one-year extension that was given for the solid waste contract, and it's, we're in kind of a, an interesting point to where we're going to be doing a rate study for the solid waste, and we have a contract. And the contract really should reflect what kind of services that we're going to want to ask. One of the issues is the paint update.
Right.
Do we want to have a paint update going forward? You know, those are one of the types of things we need to ask. We have garbage pickup, you know, we do trash collection here on Main Street, and the parks, you know, how many, what kind of services do we want? And those are the things that we'll have to put in the contract. So we're going to have to really, through this committee, find out what the community wants as far as services, and that will help in the formation of the contract.
So do you anticipate the, us being able to potentially get through the rate study and answer those questions before crunch time of developing the contract?
I would say that the rate study is going to be before the contract, and I haven't even started working on the contract, I've had other things. So depending on what priorities are for my time, I'll need to start shifting and working on the contract.
That's possible, for those things will line up in the right order?
That's, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Because the, the committee will, you know, formulate what the, what the services are, and the contract will reflect what the services will be.
Right. And just to point out, in the check register that we approved previously during our consent agenda, the line item for the citywide cleanup that happened just a month or so ago, that's $26,954. So it's expensive to do a citywide cleanup. It's very popular, and it's got rid of a lot of stuff, but that's the exact kind of question that will be hopefully helping develop with the community to answer, do we want those kind of services going forward? So, any other questions for Mark before public comment?
My steward here, a couple weeks ago, came for counsel to merge perhaps the sewer improvement fund with the sewer O and M fund. We didn't get the benefit, but a quick synopsis is, in 2010, Mr. Art and my counsel was faced with some severe issues at the sewer plant, and absolutely no planning on the part of the city, and a almost lapsed tenure plan on water. So our counsel was faced with three water rate hikes, which you guys at the, were the end of, again, increasing that. And it was also faced with three sewer hikes in 2010 that were discussed as necessary to bring, oddly enough, the sewer plant to where it is, should be today financially. The will of the city at the time, it was decided by the city manager, Alan Harvey, we shouldn't push the last five on, on the sewer, and that is why we are where we are today. Mr. Art pointed myself to negotiate with a group of citizens that formed a task force for council, and went through a process. That group had, in their minds, an ideology of, it would be, and I should say, some of those guys are still around, and some of them were pretty sharp characters. But their plan was, and they kept saying repeatedly, pay as you go, they wanted to create sewer improvement fund and a water improvement fund. They stipulated with us that, as part of the 218 process, that those individual funds would not be attached by council for anything. Sad thing is, is we didn't have a really good financial manager at the time, and they didn't stipulate the council probably the way they should have. My feeling today is, I'm not sure exactly how relevant pay as you go is. I think what they set up for the city was critical for the water fund. The sewer, the water improvement fund has been utilized for everything from rate studies to engineering. The sewer fund itself, the improvement fund, again, should be, ought to be, is supposed to be, being used for doing rate studies and work for doing the improvements in the plan. As far as the total concept of pay as you go, I don't think it's too realistic that we're actually going to do a million dollar projects. The fund right now has about $500,000 in late, that's one of the big chunks of the 1.6 million I pointed out. So my exception to what happened in the meeting was the clarity, the sunshine upon the process. I am totally agree with you in saying this task force up. I do think that with the task force, it could be addressed, the relevancy of pay as you go, and the actual necessary funds required to be in an improvement fund. And I think with the help of that to counsel, I think we could make adjustments to what's in the sewer improvement fund, and not necessarily do alone. So I'm looking forward to this moving forward and being part. But again, the idea of the task force is the sunshine and clarity, and to talk about the relevancy of the plans that were made in 2010, and if they're still current. Thank you.
Still Peter Hart, and I basically subscribe and endorse everything Marty has said. Thank you, Pace Engineering, thank you, Mr. City Manager. As upset as the community was over both water and sewer increases, three years worth of increases on the water side, three years of increases on the sewer side, we knew, we were just scratching the surface as far as the sewer side, particularly the I and I problem. The I and I problem, I understand the city has placed some main, some distribution, but we were told that until the I and I problem is solved, there will never be a way the city can run its treatment plant in a way that meets design parameters. It's simply impossible because it gets overwhelmed. And of course, we were also advised that with each year that goes by, the obligation on the city is a discharger in the Sacramento River that's going to get the doctor and the doctor and the doctor, because of pharmaceuticals, because of copper from break lines, because of this and that. As far as I know, there's only two communities that's still discharging the pristine waters of the Sacramento River, us and Mount Shasta. Somehow, in McCloud, they figured out, using earthworms and especially red fish, their sewage never gets to the McCloud River or any other river. But there's all the uncertainty, here we're going to grow to be a community of 5,000, or we're going to stay a community of 2,000. But I think there's some much more intelligent, cost-effective ways to handle our sewage, which is mostly benign. We don't have big industrial cleaners, we don't have commercial cleaners. So for both the capital expenditure that has to go under the distribution system, the treatment plant, and chemicals and so on, for the expenses of a wastewater three operator, very, very expensive until you do something different. So I think a lot of credibility came with the establishment of the citizen committees that we did, citizens came and worked their butts off. Rick Chan is one of the heroes, I think he's a retired civil engineer, and we actually had dialogue between the city council members like me, who do less, and members of the community that actually do more in Pace Engineering. So I hope we do put the committee in, there's way too many topics, the idea of pretty good sewage and solid waste. I can't imagine the committee really dealing with those issues, it's just that they're in the same fund. So I would hope that solid waste is one effort and priority, and sewage discharge issues are another priority. I plan a volunteer for both committees, and I hope Marty does, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on the item?
Uh...
Okay. We'll close the podium for public comment at this time. Is it your expectation to have a single committee for solid waste and wastewater, or two separate committees?
I was looking at a single committee.
Okay. Okay. That seems fine with me. One thing is, I would like to add, that's okay, I'll get to that when I make my shift.
Having gone through the process with both Mayor Craig and Josh in the past with the water rate study, I thought that the reason that that was successful was because we were able to come up with some very concrete things to say, this is exactly what we have to do with these different projects, it comes up to this amount. And with that, we were able to, as a group, working in a small group that was focused on, how do we sell this, how do we put all the pieces together? I thought that was an integral part of that process. I see that this is a different approach and a different situation, we don't have the same kind of metrics to say, we need such and such. So I would think exactly what you're doing is a very positive thing. I just want to make sure that you thought through that after you've got all that information, that there's some opportunity for that committee level chance to take a look at the data. As part, wouldn't you agree on that, having gone through with us?
Certainly.
So, you know what I'm saying, in other words, after you've gathered all the data, to be able to give it over to a committee and saying, this is the data that we've got from these committees and these people, I think would be very useful.
Are you going to refer to the rate study?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. There is some language here for a motion. I have a little bit of amendment to it. If it's okay, I'll move here. I move that we authorize the formation of a citizens committee to take part in addressing the fiscal challenges to the wastewater and solid waste enterprise, and to take part in working with the city of Dunsmere in a rate study that will take place later this year. And the only other addition is that direct staff to also advertise for this position on our website, Facebook, hopefully we can put an ad on the paper, or maybe get an article written in the paper.
Later this year, is that correct?
Yeah, he wrote later this year for the rate study. Into next year, probably.
The rate study will be next year.
The formation of the committee will be later this year, maybe that's in reference to that piece. That was a long-winded...
Second step.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Did you understand the motion?
I added direct staff to advertise on the website, Facebook, advertise in the...
Okay, thank you. There's a motion in a second. We'll call the vote. If there aren't any other questions, all right, everybody in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, that was unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. Anything, does anybody have anything that they'd like added to our next agenda? Mark already mentioned that it's potentially a lengthy one.
Yeah, I'd like to... What are we going to do for that today? Do we have a plan that's...
I thought you guys had a committee.
Yes, that last... Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's not on the agenda, but unless there's an objection, I would like to take it upon myself to reach out on social media to find out if in the past there has been some gift that represents the city that was historically given, you know, time to find out. And we'll come back later, maybe a second meeting in November, and talk about using that as a gift, and then we could also send it back to the city. I'm just asking, like, do I have to do some research to find out what's been done in the past? Do you know?
I don't. I'm fine with you doing that research and presenting it to us at the next meeting.
Or the next whichever.
Yeah.
Well, you can bring it up.
Or just bring it to...
Communication.
Yeah. Any objection on that?
Thank you.
Anything, Marty, for the next agenda?
No, I think I, I have, we really have enough here to do for a while.
Dave, anything on the next agenda? I do want to just at least get an idea of when we expect to start this visioning process. We're through the budget now, finally. We've got some task force and some committees working on some important things, and I'm sure that's tying up a lot of your time, but when do you anticipate being able to, and there's some talk about working with the Ford Foundation to either be present or maybe facilitate the meetings?
Yeah, that's a little bit of a, I've kind of swung down a little bit to see what they're willing to do to assist. They're talking about helping to get more involvement, looking at providing funds for maybe doing pizza or sandwiches and things like that.
Okay.
Draw more people in, and looking at, you know, what might be able to be done, sort of getting it on TV and other things as well, getting different hours and things like that. So they have some good ideas, kind of, they're supposed to be sending us some email and some paperwork that, you know, I need to go out there, to qualify and go forward, so I'm not sure how much work is involved for me to get them involved, the whole thing is kind of a lot. So I was looking at early November as the goal. So it'd be a workshop, I don't want to do it with the city council meeting, I prefer to do it with something that is separate, so it's more free-flowing, open, it's just a public, a topical meeting type.
We did a seminar meeting a couple years ago, well, the one that we did with the two city managers was effective earlier, is that earlier this year?
Yeah, it was last year.
I think the year before that, we did one where we had a facility that come in, who, he was about $1,000 for the day, but he led the group through a visioning process. Perhaps Ford would want to help us pay for some facilitation I could add, or maybe they could provide it.
Yeah, I don't think they're looking to pay for it, nothing like that. I think we'll be fine, I've been through a couple of these as well, and I think we'll be okay putting something together. I just really want to get a lot of people here. So that's really what's inspired me to work with the Ford Foundation, is if they can help really get the community to come in, however to do that, that'd be wonderful.
Stop going with the Manners or the Raiders or the Giants.
Those are things to consider.
Bruce?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to go against normal order, but I know there's somebody who came in late who may want to address the gifts that you see.
Before we get to that, I know it gets colder in winter. One of the things that has been sort of just put in the back burner is that a lot of people can't, or will not be coming to the meetings as readily in the summer. What is the status of, you know, are meetings being filmed and going over the cable network as they used to be? Are we...
It's happening right now.
It is, it is being broadcast live? That's what I asked, as to where we are with that. It's going to become a little bit more of an issue as it gets colder and...
Cindy and I had a discussion, it's been a couple weeks, I know that they're looking at kind of a program throughout the community, throughout Siskiyou County, us being one aspect of it, we talked about cameras, and there's some discussion about YouTube versus city website stuff that Cindy's going to look into. And she's going to reach out, I think, to Bryce and to Josh about the technical side of most of these things. But the live feed is part of the contract that she's going to look into, what it would take to get our meetings broadcast live, so, but there's a lot of things going on, and I'm sure Cindy and I can...
There's definitely some new live streaming options, and there have been some for a while, but there's some new ones now. But if you want it to be live on TV, that's still an issue with Northland, right?
Actually, I'd like to clarify that. We had broadcast going out until things changed, and Mr. Messers took some of the equipment back that was being used at the time. There was a SD to HD converter, and that SD to HD converter plugged into a cable, and it went into the broadcast. That's what was happening, that is what was taking place in this room historically up until when Mr. Messer left. And so I don't understand where the idea that being broadcast is a new idea...
No, 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 it's not, it's just...
But that's what it's being presented now, so, and she made a point.
I only brought this up so that there's no, you know, delay in this, as the winter comes up, it's going to become an issue for some people that are not going to be able to come to the meeting.
Live broadcasts are not part of the contract, and there are a lot of, the only other, Mount Chaska's not broadcasting live, Waireka's not broadcasting live, okay? Live is not something that people are generally looking into unless it's a boxing match or the finals of America's Got Talent. So we're looking to create the broader platform for everybody to have more exposure to government information, your city council meetings. Currently, they're not only on your website, but just through your own personal video channel, a lot of people don't know what video is, but now they're all on YouTube, so people can watch them whenever they like. And also, we're working out a broadcast schedule for you, because for some reason, you are the only city that didn't receive a rebroadcast schedule for your meetings, on the television, forever. Okay? So I'm working with Mark on these things, okay? There were a lot of discrepancies between how all the contracts were being issued with all the cities and how everybody was being served. And I think it's important to go forward in understanding that only a third of Siskiyou County has cable, okay? We're trying to get you out to other avenues so that you have a more informed coverage.
I appreciate it, just because this is not an agendaized topic, it's sort of a bit there for now, I appreciate your help in this clarification, thank you. Okay, sounds like a topic for our future agenda.
Yes, I just didn't want to let it go, so I wanted it on the agenda sometime.
Yeah, waiting on the, we're going month, right now we're not on the contracts, so we're honoring what's been past contracts, until we get more of a standard, I think, contract that's going to be more here throughout the county.
So, Mr. Worrice, for a moment?
Yeah, did you have one that you prepared, Mark?
I didn't, I, well, I started to thank all of you. Meeting with the delegation went really well, better than I imagined. Bruce, you did an amazing job, Mark, and there. And I just, I've seen such a season of adventures, and the collaboration between two cities in China and the United States, and there were some reservations about working with a small town like Dunsmere, and to the side, and completely changed. The school itself is so well-positioned to work with the international education program, and all the things that you said, Bruce, and both of you and Mark, they were very impressed, and so thank you. By the end of the week, they were pretty tired, and they just pretty said, we don't see them in school, but it changed when I was able to see Dunsmere, so thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you have any, but thank you.
I'll leave it at this time, thank you, Mark. The only other thing that I had was this memo that you received, you received this as well, about the clearing of the brush near Blackberry Hill.
I've got that as going on the next council meeting.
Okay. So we can talk about that? Initially, I mean, I'm not very well-educated on, you know, obviously it's city property, but there, and I know the fire safety council was CC'd here, but, you know, who traditionally does that kind of work, whether it's city staff or other groups? So I'd love to...
Would you like me to answer that, or when it comes up in the agenda?
Let's just go ahead and talk about it at the next meeting, since Mark's already agendas it. Those are the things that I'm thinking about.
I know I drove by the one property that's, I remember about the birdfly area, it feels like it were encased away, it's rock and gold, it looked funny to me, and I tried to get around to the backside, just so I could see what it looks like. I've been long-term, went back to the map, so I tried to get a little visit to see what the property looks like, but from the road, yeah, from the road, it looked great.
This memo certainly describes it as a mass chemical vegetation ready to go up and fling.
Well, from the road, I saw none of that, I saw a few leaves, but it is a fall on the ground, it looked like a very nice piece of property.
Well, we've got countless signatures here testing to it, so it's certainly something we need to look into.
Absolutely, and I've already tried to go out there and walk the property a little bit, just to get an idea of what it looked like. But I would like to see if the council's available for a closed session for the next meeting as well.
Okay. For November 2nd?
Yep. So we need a little early.
Five o'clock?
We have property negotiations.
Five o'clock or 5:30, is it half hour?
Five, up to you, it shouldn't say two.
5:30?
5:30, 5:30?
Cool, I'll make the most.
I'll say 5:30.
We endure.
Okay, 5:30 makes sense, sounds good, there's a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you.
You want to second it?
Sure, second.
On there?
Aye.
All right.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.